Please rise for the pledge. Cecily, roll call please.
Councillor Gorley.
Councillor Richards.
Here.
Councillor Sanchez.
Here.
Councillor Thorstad.
Here.
Councillor Trask.
Here.
President Protim Muller.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that there are seven present and zero absent. Moving on to the first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. There is in there a parade of lights road closure request and three sets of minutes. If anybody wants to pull anything, you are always welcome or you can make a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Councillor Thorstad.
Here. Art, yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yep.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show that there are seven eyes to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have one person who has signed up, but I'm going to wait for the agenda item. Any others online? Okay. Moving on to new business, request for council action resolution number 24 for 2024.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a resolution number 24 for this year declaring a water quality state of emergency. And I just have a few things that I would like to say as I present this. Because I believe it's very important. I can't help but reflect on the timing of this. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been reading Doug Griffith's Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And the insights from that book are pretty significant. And it's resonated with me personally, especially as we face this decision. It's almost uncanny how the themes from this book align with the challenges we're addressing right now. As Griffith emphasizes that the community's future hinges on its ability to protect its most vital resources. And there's no more precious resource than water itself. Water is the foundation of life, prosperity and growth. And without it, no community can survive, let alone thrive. I would like to say that water is more than just something that we turn on in the tap. It's the foundation of our health, our economy and the way of life. Griffiths tells us that when a community neglects its water, it's not just neglecting its infrastructure, it's neglecting its people, its businesses and its future. Communities that survive, communities that grow are those that have the foresight to act before problems arise. Griffiths reminds us that having poor quality water is a sure step to failure. And so today, we're here to make sure that Sweet Home takes the path of strength and success and not the path of failure. We know that the Green Peter drawdown will increase turbidity in Foster Lake. And while we've upgraded our systems and successfully managed these challenges in the past, we absolutely cannot afford to be complacent. We must stay ahead of the curve, and that's why we're here today, to ensure that we're prepared for whatever comes next. This isn't just about a drawdown, it's about protecting the people of Sweet Home now and in the future. The decision we make today isn't just for the next few months, it's for the long-term health and prosperity of our city. Griffith writes that perception becomes reality. And if we allow the perception that we're not prepared, that we're not protecting our water, it can erode the confidence of people that we have in our community. But tonight, we have the opportunity to send a clear message that Sweet Home is a city that plans for the future, that acts before there's a crisis, and that puts the well-being of its people first. In his book, Griffith shares stories of communities that waited too long to act on water issues. And by the time they realized their mistake, the damage was already done. Economic growth stalled, families moved away, businesses closed their doors, and I don't want that to happen here. So declaring an emergency is not a sign of panic, it's actually a sign of strength, a sign of leadership and a sign of wisdom. It allows us to be proactive and ensures we have all of the resources necessary to protect our water, our health and our community. As Griffith puts it, "The best way to protect your community is to be prepared." And that's exactly what this declaration does. Our water, it's safe today, and we are confident in our ability to manage this situation. But we're not waiting for something to go wrong. By declaring this emergency, we are ensuring that we have every tool available to keep Sweet Home's water safe, no matter what challenges come our way. So by considering this step, we're showing that we believe in our community and in doing everything possible to ensure that Sweet Home remains safe, a prosperous place to live, work and to raise our families. So together, we can face any challenge, together we can protect our future. This emergency declaration, should it be approved, is our commitment to you, Sweet Home. It would be our promise that we'll always act in the best interest of this community, that we will always put the needs of Sweet Home first and that we will always protect what matters most. And so with that in mind, I would like to present this resolution number 24 for 2024 to the council. And at this point, I will hand it over to council for discussion.
Well said, Chief. And with that said, I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution Number 24 for 2024, declaring the state of emergency concerning the Green Peter water drawdown.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds on the table. Any discussion of councillors?
Oh, I have one thing. I just want to say I am tremendously grateful, Jason, for you getting this on here. And I also want to say thank you to Councillor Sanchez, because I know she's worked a lot on water issues behind the scenes. So I just want to say thank you both.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Chief, that was beautifully said. That's our most important goal with what's coming down the pike is to protect our water. And I am so thankful about your proactive approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. When we met last week to discuss this, I'm just grateful for how you just worded what we were discussing. And yeah, how we desire to protect our most valuable resource. So, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Thorstad.
Absolutely.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve Resolution Number 24 for 2024. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, city manager recruitment strategy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This proposal is in response to our work session last week where we discussed how we wanted to move forward with filling the city manager position officially. As a result of that work session, there was a consensus to move forward with an internal recruitment. It would be managed by staff that would go out publicly. So as part of this RCA, I do have a proposed tentative schedule that would include posting as soon as tomorrow and beginning recruitment efforts on some other job boards. I'm also recommending that at our next city council meeting on the 22nd, we hold a public hearing so that the public has the opportunity to comment on what they're seeking in the next city manager. And that would also satisfy the state legal requirement if we did want to meet an executive session on this matter and the recruitment. Based on feedback I received, I extended the closing date to November 22nd. And then I think we should move hastily to meet in early December to discuss the candidates and next steps.
Councillors, any questions? I'll entertain a motion or...
So moved, she's recommended.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation of... Yeah, the recruitment strategy as proposed, which is to move forward with this timeline. Any discussion of councillors?
Madam Mayor, may I? So I just want it to be on the record that I am concerned with the quickness of the process, even though we do need to get the process started. And I am also concerned about making a knee-jerk reaction decision, potentially with council that may or may not be here when we elect a new possible majority. So I do want people to know that I think that this should be a decision for the incoming council.
Thank you, councillor. And I will note too, the way that I designed this, that initial meeting date in December is just to review what we've gotten so far. It's open at that point. So if we did decide to move forward with a recruiting firm, we could make that decision. If we wanted to postpone any other action, we can make that decision. Obviously, there are no interview dates in here, so that still remains to be determined.
I'd also like to remind the council that we have a six-month timeline with the current interim city manager. And we cannot extend that another six months. We would have to get a different city manager. So I really think that we, it is our obligation to try to have continuity for our community and do our due diligence in seeing this through.
That's correct. That's stated in our charter that an interim can be an interim for a six-month period. That's not something that is a choice as far as a charter-directed matter. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Cecily, any further discussion of councillors?
Madam Mayor, may I? So when we had an interim prior, when we were looking for the city manager and it took upwards of eight months, what was the process that we went through to continue on the interim? Did we hire somebody else in between and then go back to... I mean, can you help me recall, please?
We went the six months. The interim city manager had to step away. We had to then offer that position to someone within the city to take over. And they took over that for the rest of the time. Now, that doesn't mean, there is a clarification or there's a period of time, but there is a, it's a period of time, I'm not familiar with what it is, that that interim could step away and then come back and reapply for the interim position. But we had to go with somebody within the city after the six months.
Thank you.
Any further discussion of councillors? Okay, on the table right now is a motion and a second to approve the recruitment strategy as proposed. Cecily, please call for a vote.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
No.
Councillor Sanchez.
No.
Councillor Thorstad.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Sorry, I did not hear Councillor Sanchez's vote.
No.
Let the record show that we have five ayes and two nays to approve the recruitment strategy as proposed. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Request for council action ordinance number three for 2024, abandoned shopping carts. So we'll have the staff report and then I will have the public comment to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this RCA is to request approval and first reading of a proposed ordinance regulating abandoned shopping carts within the city. The city has long dealt with shopping carts belonging to local businesses being abandoned in various parts of the city. This is no fault of the establishments themselves, but rather those who decide to take a cart off of the property and leave it wherever they feel like leaving it. Currently, city staff collect these carts to keep them from being an eyesore endangered to others. And we notify the local businesses that they are in the city's possession. Some businesses will collect them as soon as they are notified, while others do little to address the problem. This leaves the city with a large collection of abandoned shopping carts that the city cannot use, which takes up valuable space and staff time. Oregon revised statutes provide some requirements and authorized tools that cities can use to address this problem, including requiring that businesses include ownership and contact information on the carts themselves, post a phone number that people can call about their carts and penalties that the city can impose on businesses that do not collect their carts within a reasonable amount of time. In addition, the statute allows cities to take title to any abandoned shopping carts that are not claimed by the owner within 30 days. The attached proposed ordinance is required to allow the city to use these tools. This ordinance was included in a previous city council meeting agenda, but was pulled after discussions with local retailers. Staff invited representatives of Bymart, Safeway and Thriftway to discuss any necessary changes to the draft ordinance. The attached ordinance has been updated based on input from Bymart and Thriftway. Safeway has not made any comments on the ordinance. And so in your packet, there is this ordinance. I have included also a tracked changes version that shows the changes that staff made after meeting with Bymart and Thriftway. Essentially, what the changes mean is that there would be a longer period of time before any penalties would be assessed, 30 days to be exact. And then it would be 45 days before the city was able to take title to any cart. And those are the only significant changes. One thing I will add is that this discussion has actually already had a benefit in that I believe all 118 carts that were in the city's possession have now been reclaimed, which I'm very pleased. Those ones at least will no longer take up space. However, we do want to make sure that we do not end up with an accumulation anywhere near that size again. And so I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe we have a comment.
Yes, we do.
As well.
Seth Peterson, please come forward with your public comment. Just state your name and your address for the record when you get to the microphone.
Seth Peterson, 1980 Main Street here in Sweet Home. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillors, for your time this evening. I'm here to speak about the proposed ordinance in front of us. As one of the managers with Bymart, I'm pleased to say that Director of Community Economic Development Blair Larson and Community Service Officer Sean Morgan have listened to and taken into account the feedback that we provided to ensure that the ordinance would be crafted in a way that does not create any undue burdens on businesses that engage in good faith efforts to partner with the city to keep our streets clean and reduce the wasting of resources at the Public Works Department. I also want to say that while there are financial penalties in the ordinance, we recognize this is not a revenue generating scheme and that is merely an enforcement mechanism. We at Bymart are proud to be members of this community and we take our responsibility to it seriously. We appreciate the efforts that the city staff have gone to in order to partner with us on this matter to result in a solution that is able to satisfy everyone involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Seth. Any questions of councillors?
No question but a comment. I'm glad to see this come forth. For a long time, I've talked to Chief regarding this matter, and I'm glad to see we're at least making some effort towards this direction. Because it's kind of, when you're driving up and down Main Street or Long Street and being a retail myself, when you see someone pushing a shopping cart, you immediately say yourself, they're just stealing right there. That is a theft. And knowing what the price of shopping carts are, and I can't speak for Bymart, but I know what the cost I'm faced with, they run between $500 to $1,000 apiece. And that's quite an expense. And that's why I've asked the Chief once, I said, "Well, is there anything we can do?" He said, "Well, unless the box stores," I call them box stores, where they have the most carts, come forth and press charges, there's nothing we can do. But I'm glad at least we can do something to curb this problem. Because that is a tool that our homeless are using is making the messes that we've seen in our community. So I think I'm glad to see this come forth.
Any other questions of councillors or councillor would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, Blair, you said Thriftway was all good with this.
What's that?
You said Thriftway was all good with this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I? So the only thing that I wish was added into this, but I realize that it's cost prohibitive possibly, is we had talked about anti-theft mechanisms placed on the carts, magnetic locks so they don't roll outside of the parking lot. I know that I've seen that in Corvallis, all over the city when I go park there. So I think it's a good first step, but that is something that I think we're missing. And I just don't know how much it costs the businesses to put that on their carts as well.
Councillor Sanchez, I can answer that question for you? It's about $500 more per cart to put that theft locking system on. I think it'd be a great idea if, you know, they can afford it. I think that would be another way of hindering this problem, but it is quite an expense.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a friend that is a regional manager for a grocery store here in three different counties, and I talked to him about this issue. And those locking mechanisms are not as secure as we think they are. And the homeless in Corvallis have learned how to bypass those with a cloth and they can take off down the street. So they're not 100%. And they are very costly, like Councillor Muller said, anywhere from $500 to $1,000 more, which would cost more than the actual cart. So just that's my two cents.
Madam Mayor, this has been great conversation, but I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution and to conduct a first reading of this ordinance.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve this ordinance and conduct a first reading. I also would like to say that this is one thing I like about Sweet Home, a small town, is that an idea came forward. We had people that said, "Hey, let's make it better." And we actually had business partners who came to meetings, Thriftway and Bymart, to speak into how can it best be used for our community. So thank you to Bymart and to Thriftway for participating in and for staff for making the effort to make that meeting happen. So we have a motion in a second. Cecily, is any further discussion? Sorry, didn't mean to cut anything video. Okay, Cecily.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Thorstad.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve this ordinance and to conduct a first reading. Thank you. Since we passed that ordinance unanimously, I can entertain a motion for the second reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to read this ordinance by title only. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Thorstad.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yep.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to read this ordinance for the second time by title only.
Ordinance Bill Number Three for 2024, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance for the Recovery of Abandoned Shopping Cards.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to move this forward to the next council meeting for the third reading.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
President Protim Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yep.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Thorstad.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move this on to the third reading at the next meeting. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. It is public hearing and request for council action for ordinance number four for 2024, Parks Master Plan. So to begin with, I will open up... Yep, public hearing at 6:55 PM, and I will read the rules regarding that. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have a question, please wait until appropriate time and then direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. Declarations by city council. I'm going to go over the declarations and then ask each councillor regarding them. Personal bias, prejudice or prejudgment of the facts to such a degree that an official is incapable of making an objective decision based on the merits of the case. Conflict of interest. Has any member of the council or their immediate family have any financial or other interests in the application that is to be disclosed? Ex parte information. The council is bound to base their decision on information received in the public hearing and what is presented in testimony. If a member of the council has talked with an applicant or has information from outside the public hearing, it needs to be shared at this time so that everyone in the audience has an opportunity to be aware of it and the rest of the council be aware of it. In that way, you can be rebutted and can be discussed openly. So, Councillor Richards, do you have personal bias, conflict of interest or ex parte information?
Nope.
Councillor Thorstad?
No.
Councillor Gorley?
No.
I do not. Councillor Protim Muller?
No.
Councillor Trask?
No.
And Councillor Sanchez?
No.
Okay. Moving on, report, the staff report regarding this matter.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to invite up our consultants on this project, Elizabeth Oble and... Blanking. I'm sorry. Will you please introduce yourselves?
Name and address for the record, please.
Colin MacArthur with Cameron McCarthy Landscape Architecture and Planning.
That's why I...
Confusing part. And then Elizabeth Oble, who's our project manager. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time tonight in this hearing to attend to the adoption of the Parks Master Plan. We've had the privilege of working on this over the last year with the Sweet Home community and city staff and working closely with the Park and Tree Committee. And so far, the plan has been recommended for approval by the Park and Tree Committee. Last month, it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Both votes were unanimous, and we're hoping to advance the plan to adoption here tonight or at your next meeting. And with adoption, this plan will replace, it's not Sweet Home's first Parks Master Plan. This plan will replace the last one that's currently adopted. And we believe, having worked closely with the community and city staff, that it is a big improvement, big evolution, and will set Sweet Home up well for the next 20 years in providing park and recreation services to its residents. And with that, I'll let Elizabeth give our overview of the plan.
Thanks, Colin. Thanks for having us tonight. It's nice to see you all again. Thank you. So I will give an overview of what we're going to talk about today. And I will also emphasize certain areas of the presentation more. And I will also emphasize certain areas of the presentation more because I know you've heard some of this content before, but it is included just to give you an overview of the entire project. So I will go over the process, which includes the inventory and service analysis. We'll describe our public involvement with the community. We'll also talk about the needs assessment that was done and how that ties into the goals and the recommendations, which then informed projects, specific projects. Next slide, please. So we began the project in summer of 2023. We've been working on it for over a year. In the earlier phase of the project, we look at the existing conditions and take an inventory of that. We do a long community outreach process, which was over six months, I believe. And then we use both the data from the inventory and our level of service analysis as well as community input to develop our needs assessment. Part of the needs assessment also looks at state and national data, which essentially we use to like bolster or verify what community needs are seen. We looked at, sorry, goals and recommendations after we completed a needs assessment. And then we've moved into the final phase, which is documenting the plan, which you've seen, and then moving forward with adoption. Excellent. So I mentioned we did an inventory early on. And that inventory, we take a look at all the different types of facilities and classify those according to national standards. You may hear me reference the National Park and Recreation Association, which provides a lot of guidance on this type of work, or NRPA they're called. So we follow their standards in terms of classifying the facilities and mapping those. We also take a look at the context to understand other recreation in the area such as, you know, other park providers like at the county level or school districts, which properties are often used for recreation. Next slide. So part of the inventory, we do quantify the park facilities as well. So that's an important part of the analysis, which we'll get into in a second. But we look at both acreage and then miles in regards to trails. Excellent. Level of service is one area where we begin to use that data to assess how the current park system is functioning. Next slide. So there are a few different ways to measure level of service. There are three that I'll talk about. The first one is walkability. So NRPA uses a few different mileage calculations to determine how walkable parks are. So we have used that to assess Sweet Home's current park systems, level of service. What we've identified is that the western part of town has a lot of parks and it provides more walkability. And then the eastern part of town currently does not have parks and walkable service for the community. Next slide, please. The second measure of level of service is residents per park. So what we do here is we calculate a ratio based on the number of residents and the parks in an area, and we use NRPA data to compare how a park provider like the city compares to other park agencies of similar sized communities. What we found with this is that there's an opportunity for basically increasing the number of parks that there are in a service to or in the system to bring that ratio down a little bit and provide better service essentially. The plan and its recommendations align with either maintaining the current level of service or improving it. Next slide, please. The last metric for level of service is looking at park land. So we also looked at how the current park system measures against similar sized agencies or park providers. There's an opportunity here to increase park acreage in Sweet Home, which would increase the level of service in terms of park acres. Next slide, please. I do want to talk a little bit about our community involvement process. Next slide. So we use three different methods. We spoke with members of the community. We hosted an online survey, and then we also attended events in the community. These, among these three different methods in our approach, we were able to connect with different residents, business owners, different ages of people and different backgrounds, and able to get a good understanding of what all sorts of people in Sweet Home are looking for in their park system. Next slide. So I'll just summarize each method briefly. The online survey provided some really key insight in that 70% of residents felt that the city needed additional parks. That was pretty significant finding for us to see. We were able to see what the most important amenities were for people. The play amenities and covered play, trails, nature play, and any kind of water play like a splash pad were incredibly, or highly important to people. We also were able to read through people's entries about what they want to see in the future. There was a lot of interest in improving the access to park spaces, but also rounding out the park system as it continues to evolve so that it provides amenities that interest different people. And then there was an interest in, I know I mentioned people want additional parks, but there was interest too in upgrading the current facilities and people liking those and just wanting to see them improve over time. Next slide. So we did interview a number of community members. They did kind of affirm, or we heard some themes around the types of park amenities that were most popular, playgrounds and just play facilities in general. We heard that reiterated, but also circulation and accessibility, like ADA improvements, sidewalks. And there was also some interest too in community spaces, either for gathering or also just covered spaces to use year round was also of interest. And then one thing to note too, the current park facilities, there was a really positive impression amongst people of the current maintenance that happens. So people have a like positive view of that currently, which is great. Excellent. So we attended two community events. We attended the Harvest Festival last year and then one summer reading program day in the park at Sankey Park. We heard mostly from families at the summer reading program day, and then the Harvest Festival attracted a lot of different individuals. But amongst our conversations there, we heard some reoccurring themes about most popular park amenities. So I mentioned play already, but we heard that reiterated both in playgrounds and nature play. Water play and recreation was popular, as well as a variety of trails and paths. And then I should also note a bike park and dog park were also popular. We heard again from people that the east side of town is in need of parks. We also were able to understand a little bit more about what barriers people perceive in the park system. So there were a few comments about people feeling unsafe in parks or unwelcome, and then a lack of facilities in general. People seem to think that over time, park improvements would help with that. Excellent. And then I'll touch on our needs assessment more briefly. So we had five key findings, and I think you've heard this before. So I'll kind of just touch on the five categories. But improving and developing facilities was important. And then we've highlighted the types of improvements or developments that are most critical under that. The second was level of service and connectivity. So we've heard that repeatedly from the community, but it also backed up by data that that's a need. The third is physical accessibility within parks. So we'd also heard accessibility and circulation and even parking areas to be able to access parks are really important. Next slide. The fourth was expanding funding sources. There was awareness amongst the community too of when you want to develop more amenities, that there's a need to expand the funding sources for that. There was interest in utilizing volunteers or partnerships and exploring new ones, as well as building on existing ones. And the last one is improved access and inclusion. So this is, there's a couple of things under that kind of umbrella, which is people are interested in a variety of amenities, like I mentioned, as the system evolves in the future, to just appeal to different age groups and abilities. And then also signage and wayfinding was something that came up as a need to better help explain how to access the park system, what's currently there and what will be in the future. Excellent. Okay, our goals. Next slide. We had five goals. And these are directly carried over from the five findings from the needs assessment. So it may seem repetitive, but we're kind of carrying through across the plan the data that we've collected from the inventory, the community input, and then also national and state data. All of that synthesized in the needs assessment, and we are using that to inform the goals. So you'll see facility development and improvement, improving level of service, accessibility, expanding upon funding, and then also expanding the park services over time to improve access and inclusion. So as part of our recommendations, we develop a proposed park system map. So this helps illustrate existing parks and which parks will include a facility development or like a project essentially. In the future, we also map park properties that are undeveloped to kind of highlight what the future system will look like with that property included in the parks system, kind of the collection of parks. We also include park acquisition and development areas. There are two of those. I'll speak more to that in a second. But we're illustrating all of those and then also providing context of where there's, you know, other school district properties or county parks such. Next slide. So in addition to projects that I'll talk about, one of our recommendations is to increase the level of service. So this essentially looks like acquiring more parkland and more parks over the next 20-year planning period. We are recommending adopting a level of service of six acres of parklands. That would bring Sweet Home up towards a typical park provider of its size. And then this would look like approximately 40 acres over the next 20 years of new parkland that's developed. That 40 acres could be spread across three to four different parks. And that essentially would, it would help the level of service in both categories, both increasing overall acreage, but also increasing the distribution of parks by adding new ones to the system. Excellent. Okay, so we have our parks or our projects mapped on this graphic. And this is to help illustrate that there are different types of projects. We have park projects, which are either improvements or developments of specific parks. On our following slides, we'll also have like some planning projects and acquisitions that I'll get to in a second. But right now, I just want to share that we have park improvements for every park property in the system. The number of projects for each park vary. Some of the really small, like mini park properties only have a couple of projects. And then some of the neighborhood parks have more projects, and that's associated with size, but also the type of amenities that the community needs. So we're balancing out, kind of meeting the projects needed at each park based on size, but also what the community is looking for. And just to kind of reiterate, some of those top priorities were things like play and trails, improving circulation and ADA access, and other active recreation, as well as improvements for safety. Next slide. Okay, and then I just want to note that a few of the needs that we heard, both from the data and the community, were best kind of recommended in more of a planning project. So we have two of those. One is a trail system plan, which would be able to identify like trail improvements across the entire city. And then a wayfinding plan, and that would address both the design and location of signage. And that would help people be able to find parks more easily in town. Next slide, please. And then the last two projects are the acquisition areas I mentioned. So we are identifying several new parks on the eastern side of town. And two of those have specific sites, and then the other two are acquisition areas, which means that we're identifying them as areas to look for park acreage to acquire in the future. Next slide, please. So as part of the plan, we also prioritize the different projects. Various things go into that, but a big part of it is the current state of a park as well as community need and what amenities are not being currently offered and how important certain amenities are to the community. So within our our first, well, I guess I should say, the prioritization is broken up into three different kind of groups. Highest priority is the first five years of the planning period. Kind of moderate priority, so the next five years, and then the last 10 years in the planning period are more lower priority projects. Within the first planning period or the kind of higher priority projects, I just wanted to note we're focusing on accessibility projects, so improvements to trails and parking. We have developing one new neighborhood park on that eastern part of town where there's a high need. Lights and cameras to address some safety concerns at a number of parks. And then we're also kind of setting the groundwork for later in the planning period by tackling some of the planning projects, like a trail system plan and a wayfinding plan, which like further improvements kind of hinge on doing that work first. The total, actually, next slide, please. So the total cost for the planned projects is around $15 million. Like as we've broken up the projects into those different priority groups, that spreads the cost out over the 20-year period. I do want to note though that the costs are kind of a guide and the plan overall is a guide for the city to use in the future when they're ready to look at approaching different projects and taking the next step on them. So this is, I just want to emphasize it's a it's a guide or a reference, but it helps give some context to the impact of different types of projects. Next slide. The plan also does discuss different funding sources for the different aspects of the the projects and ongoing maintenance. So we do look at, or we did look at current funding sources as well as opportunities for expanded funding. So we addressed, you know, the parks' current funds, but also, you know, in the future, bonds, STC funding. Funding sources like grants, donations, and partnerships could be used for new projects that come online. And then existing funding sources for operations and maintenance include the park funding, but potentially additional grants, donations, or volunteer work could impact the funding sources for that. Slide, so we'd love to address any questions, comments that you have.
So, Madam Mayor, I noticed that almost half of Hobart Park is outside of the city limits. Was the entire park taken in consideration for acreage or just the part that's in the city?
For, in terms of the cost estimate and any, the entire park acreage was included for the cost estimate for any projects related.
Okay, what about looking at potential park size over the years? And the acreage that you're, you would recommend shooting for, is the area outside of the city limits where they, was that taken into consideration as well?
Yeah, we, that's a good question. We did account for the entire park acreage in the level of service analysis, yeah.
Okay, and then that brings me to the last question. Since half that park is outside of the city limits, should we adjust the city boundaries to incorporate that entire park since it's our park and not a county park?
Uh, we, our recommendation would be only if you plan to extend urban services to the portion outside of the urban growth boundary, then you, you, yeah, yeah, there actually is a fairly simple path for expanding the UGB to bring parkland in. If you don't plan on, and I can't remember if we have restroom facilities at that park or not, then there is really no reason to to bring it in, other than cleanup.
And then it's awkward having a park that large and half of it hanging out of town.
Yeah, or the next time you go through a UGB expansion, add this piece in because it fairly, should be a fairly simple addition.
Great, thank you. Any other questions of councilors regarding the report?
Madam Mayor, if I may. So I have two. The first one is there was some new guidelines by FEMA regarding development and such. We brought it up last time that it could be barriers to Quarry Park. Was that relevant to this plan? If we go with this plan, are we locked in to this? Or are we going to have to adjust based upon the FEMA guidelines? I guess it's bad enough for Governor Kotek to ask for it to be stopped, so. And then second question, I'll let you answer that one first and then I'll have.
Yes, we are aware of the new FEMA regulations and the work that our local jurisdictions are doing to try to understand and anticipate the regulations and what will be required of development projects that go forward in FEMA-regulated areas. So yeah, we're aware of that. Most of what we've proposed in Quarry Park is more natural area development that doesn't lead to a lot of fill or a rise in floodplain elevations. If we had proposed an extensive amount of buildings on the site, then I think there would be reason to revisit the plan. But I think, we don't see any barrier, I'll put it this way, we don't see any barriers through the current plan. There is a open question about what sort of analysis will be required by ultimately the city and perhaps Lynn County in implementing the new new regulations. And that that's where it, there may be some additional costs in permitting and technical analysis to get floodplain development permits that we not accounted for. But I think, good, good, very good question, something to keep an eye on. And once the, our jurisdictions start adopting ordinances, we'll know what the regulations are.
Okay, and then second question, and I apologize. I had been working graveyard and I haven't reviewed this, but last meeting where you brought the plan up, it was a somewhat of a priority, I think, for Clover Park to maybe shut down First Avenue. Is that still a priority in this park's plan?
No, that's not in the plan.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
That was, yeah, that was a change we made following our last round of feedback.
Any other questions for councilors? Thank you so much for your efforts and your report. Next item in the public hearing is testimony from those in favor or support of the plan. Does anybody want to come forward who is in favor or support of the plan? If so, you would need to come to the microphone at this table and give your name and address. You got to come to the microphone. Just each of you give your name and address into the microphone so that they can hear it for the recording.
Deborah Northern, eighteen twenty first Street, Sweet Home.
Matthew Bechtel, one oh eight Holly Street.
Hi. So yes, when we, I went before the planning commission last couple, last month. We worked really hard on this and also this company team, they worked really hard with us. They did a lot of work. And twenty years from now, I probably won't be here, maybe, we'll see. But I just really think that you guys should really consider approving this because it is, we did a lot of work. Trask can testify for that, being our representative. And we asked a lot of questions. We also did a lot of research. I, we are really in favor of it.
Your turn.
I agree with her, you know, we, we really worked hard and the parks have been improving so rapidly, you know, it's, we've had a lot of great fun in the, in the new park, in Sankey especially. I hope you would approve it.
Thank you.
And I support the plan as well, and I hope it is approved.
Thank you so much for coming forward. Anybody else with testimony that is in favor or support of the plan? Name and address in the microphone?
Elizabeth Curtis, and it's seventeen fifty, fifty-six, Twelfth Avenue. And the only thing that seems to be very important in our nation right now is that not only do we have clean water, and thank you very much for that concern, very deep concern. And also the concern for land, for people in the towns and cities to have food. Food security is a big issue in our nation right now, and I would like to see some way that you could bring community gardens and more ability for people to be able to farm and garden regeneratively. That is the best way to improve economy, a little town economy, is regenerative farms, networks, and and local banks, but people need to be able to have the security of food. That just seems to be really important and maybe an area that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Any other testimony from those in favor or support of the plan? Moving on to testimony from those in opposition to the plan. Okay. Testimony from those neither in support or opposition to the plan. Hearing none, I will close this public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Now, City Council, it's time for you to discuss this idea and decide if there will be a motion.
I would like to see it moved forward for approval.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll second that. But if I may, I'd like to talk about the two that came from and took this thing for us together. The, the committee worked their tails off too, and, and we had Hubrick Works here, people, Angela and Blair, and a lot of people, Greg and the parks people, they are really, really good at this. They worked really hard to get the things done that we've already got done. And Angela, she's been able to get some grants for us for one of our next things that we're doing in Sankey Park. And we would like to move on as soon as somebody comes up with fifteen million. We know the costs, but but this is a good setup for us to get, to move far, farther on. And I don't know how we're going to get to that part where we can have five, six, seven more of them. I don't know how it's going to necessarily get there, but I know that this group here will work hard to get it done. And so that's why I second this. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. It's time for discussion. I also want to say that a lot of work has been put into this, but it is a guiding document, which means when it comes to implementing, it's just going to be something that we can use to guide what we can do and how much we can anticipate the cost to be and where to move forward from and what's the low hanging fruit, that kind of. So I'm just grateful for this. It's a document that will be very helpful.
So Madam Mayor, point of clarification, does the motion include the request to conduct a first reading of the ordinance?
Thank you for that question.
Yes.
Okay, does the second then still stand? Counselor Trask? Does the second still stand? He just amended his motion.
Motion for reading.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion of councilors?
Madam Mayor, if I may. So with the gal that just came up about community gardens, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that as well. So we have one, I believe, at Strawberry Park. I'm very thankful for that. I would love to see more. It brings a lot of benefits to the community, so thank you for bringing that up.
Hearing no further discussions, Cecily, please call for a vote. We have a motion and a second to approve with a first reading.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve twenty twenty four, twenty-four park system plan as recommendeded and conduct a first reading of ordinance number four for twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four. Okay, since we had a unanimous vote to approve this, ordinance number four, we'll entertain a motion to do the second reading by title only this evening.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to do the second reading by title only. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve it for a second reading by title only.
Ordinance bill number blank for twenty twenty-four, ordinance number blank. Sweet Home ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-four park system plan as a sub-element of the City of Sweet Home comprehensive plan and replacing all prior park system plans.
I will entertain a motion to move it forward for the third reading at our next council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Corley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move forward for a third reading at our next council meeting. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is a telecommunications franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last item for me tonight, so you can stop hearing my voice after this. The purpose of this RCA is to present a proposed telecommunications franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC, which is proposing to provide fiber to the home internet service in Sweet Home. Internet access is increasingly becoming a necessity for daily life, and City of Sweet Home residents currently only have the option of internet access via cable or telephone lines. Last year, we had Alirica come to us seeking a telecommunications franchise agreement for a fiber to the home system. Zipley Fiber is proposing essentially the same type of system. There is no exclusivity in our agreements with either of, either the one that we already have with Alirica or any of our other franchises, nor is there an exclusivity clause in this agreement. So Zipley approached the city and asked for this. We worked to make sure that it was similar to our other agreements to treat businesses fairly. And they have indicated that once they have an approved franchise agreement with the city, then they will make their plans as to when and where they would start their system. And so I don't have any additional information on what, what that looks like, what their build-out schedule would be. But this is the agreement that they, that they have asked for and that the city staff are recommending. It essentially puts them on the same footing as other franchises in the city.
Thank you very much. Any questions of councilors?
Is it typical for a community of our size to have more than one provider like this? Just asking.
You know, it's hard to say when it comes to fiber to the home because most communities our size, in in recent memory at least, have not had systems like this. And so this is kind of new territory. I know that as you get into more populated metropolitan areas, you do have, you know, additional service providers. But this is kind of new for us. I was rather surprised, frankly, when Zipley came to us. But never look a gift horse in the mouth, I guess.
Very excited about the potential of having multiple options for our community. It increases the competition and provides better services, so I'm just grateful to have that available. Or potentially available.
And affordability.
And affordability, yep. So if there are no more questions from councilors, I'll entertain a motion. So moved as recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion from councilors?
Does that include the recommendation of a second, a first reading?
First reading.
I'll second that, too.
Thank you for catching that again. Any discussion of councilors? No, Cecily, please. No. Cecily, please call for a vote. Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve the Zipley ordinance. And conduct the first reading. Yay. We've just passed that with seven ayes and no nays unanimous vote, so I will entertain a motion to hear it, but the second reading of it by title only again tonight. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Muller?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to read this ordinance by title only for the second reading.
Ordinance bill number four for, or number five for twenty twenty four, ordinance number blank, and ordinance granting to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC, a non-exclusive franchise for the provision of telecommunications services within the city of Sweet Home and stating an effective date.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to move this on for the third reading at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote. Counselor Gorley? Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Muller?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move it forward for the third reading at the next meeting. Mr. Snyder, I hope this is exciting to have three ordinances and I think it's your last meeting, just saying, lots of fun. Next item on the agenda, reports of committees. Counselor Sanchez needs to leave for work, so she'll be dismissed. Reports of committees. Hearing no reports, Department Director reports. Is there anything you want to highlight there? Nope. Okay. How about you, Police Chief?
I would just say that if you took a look at the stats for the PD, we were up a little bit in person and property crimes, but also I think very noteworthy were the traffic stats. So we had lots of traffic stops and citations were up, warnings were up, everything was up. So our traffic enforcement officer is doing a great job out there.
I see him often.
I.
Not personally.
Yes. We all do, yes.
Grateful for his efforts.
Yes.
Been caught, that's the problem.
She's not been caught.
Moving on. City managers report.
Yeah, I would like to take just a moment to reflect on the Harvest Fest and the great success that we had there. I mean, you know, just kind of looking at all of this come together throughout this last year. Angela's been working on it very hard. It was, it was great. The weather was beautiful. And there were lots of people that showed up, a wonderful band that played. And I just wanted to express some, some special thanks first to our Public Works Department. They showed up at 5:00 AM to get this thing up and running. I know Adam was there at 5:00 AM, and so I am so thankful for Public Works and Adam. Thank you for, you know, all of the hard work that you put into this. I noticed throughout the entire festival that Public Works was, they were changing out trash cans. They were just on it. And so I'm just super thankful for that. And additionally, Angela, who is our planning and building manager, just a very heartfelt thank you to you for all your dedication and hard work on this. I want you to know that I saw you all throughout the year working on this. You put meetings together and this thing was just awesome. You have this, this whole festival down to a science, and I am super, super thankful for that. A few noteworthy things, the Chili Cook Off raised one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars for the Sweet Home Kids Food Pack Program, which is awesome. The Pie Bake Off raised three hundred and fifty dollars for our parks program. And the mug sales, we had a hundred and fifty dollars there for the Weddle Bridge Fund and a hundred, an additional hundred dollars was given online. I also want to express gratitude to all of the vendors that showed up, the performers, the volunteers, everyone who showed up to make this memorable, local artisans, all of the food, and of course, the public band. Everyone played a very significant role in this, and it was wonderful. Thank you so much, everyone who participated and everyone that showed up to support our community. I'm really thankful for that. The next thing that I wanted to talk about is take a moment to give a big thank you to Robert Snyder, our current city attorney, as this will be his last city council meeting. This is a big deal before he retires. Robert has been with the city since nineteen eighty-one, starting out as an assistant city attorney. And for the past forty-three years, he's really been a significant person and a rock for our community. His legal expertise has guided us through a whole lot over the years, and I think it's safe to say that we have all benefited from your wisdom and your dedication and experience. Robert, you made a huge impact on this city. We're grateful for everything that you've done. You've been a true partner in making Sweet Home a better place, and we will very, very much miss you. Thank you for your service and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. And saying that, I have a couple of challenge coins for you. I have a PD and a city challenge coin.
I'd like to add on to that. It's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with you all these years. Thank you for your dedicated service. And we greatly going to miss you. You did an awesome job. And I know Blair's got some big shoes to fill.
I thank you for the opportunity of serving as the city attorney for Sweet Home for all these years. And I wish the city, the city council, and the city employees the very best in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Not done yet. I have a couple of things too. We will be, you will be missed, Mr. Snyder, but I, I just want to also say, Mr. Snyder has an incredible sense of humor, and if you don't know it, you should discover it. So thank you for your years of service. I just gave him one of those collector mugs from Weddle Bridge, and I just want you to know, you all can have one of those. I think we have a few left. They are for sale to help support the bridge. You can still purchase them here at City Hall as I did. So. Are you further? No, are you done with your city manager? Okay. So I just wanted to go over to a few more things regarding the mayor's report. Thursday night, 6:00 PM, Sweet Home High School Auditorium, the South Santiam Watershed Council will be hosting an informational meeting regarding the Green Peter Drawdown. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will be present in the building. So and they, we were told there will be plenty of time for questions and answers. So communicate that with people you know, Thursday, 6:00 PM. I also, just want to also thank Cecily for scheduling a public hearing regarding the city manager process and what we're looking for in our next city manager for next council meeting on October twenty-second. Thank you for doing that. And yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff. We've had a number of things that came before us today, just to make Mr. Snyder's last meeting exciting, three ordinances, but also two plans that we discussed with Planning Commission and the Parks Master Plan. That's a lot of work, represent a lot of hours from our staff. So thank you, staff, for the great work that you do. That is all I have to say. And any council business for, I want to clarify, I've been instructed that council business for the good of the order is to be about council business. So just counselors, keep in mind if you're going to speak at this time, that it's regarding business that the council covers. Okay?
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I forgot. I just want to let know, people know that you did a good job on the, on the water thing. But the public works saved us. They saved us. They were working their body off, getting, getting, keeping that water going where we can get it. And, and, and I wish Greg was here, and I don't, but that's beside the point, but they worked hard to keep it, so we had good water.
They do work very hard. We're grateful for our Public Works Department. Any other council business for the good of the order? If not, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:59. Sorry, Adam.